Well, we'll go ahead and start this little open forum here tonight. And thank you all very much for coming. We are broadcasting it on TV so that the residents can also see it. I guess I would ask that if you want to speak that you go up to the podium so it will be recorded for the TV station and everyone will be able to hear you also. About, well, for quite a while now, the village of Hicksville has had difficulty staffing our EMS service. We went from a part-time service to one full-time person and then we added another one and another one. And so when it got so that we were having several full-time people, Michelle Wagner from Community Memorial Hospital voiced concerns that that may have an effect on the hospital, and I will let Michelle explain to you what that effect could be.
So in 2000, the hospital became a critical access hospital. And the way we became a critical access hospital is because the village had all volunteer staff. And what critical access means to us is we're paid differently from the Medicare service. And quite frankly, without critical access status, the hospital would not exist in its current form, probably within the community of Hicksville. So there was a concern because that's how we were certified, that as the paid staff and the volunteer, or the paid staff EMS increased, what would happen if we're asked to recertify under the same rules that we certified in 2000? It was in 2015, 15 years after we became critical access hospital, is when CMS actually verified the information. And so it was very fresh in my mind about how we were certified. And at some point in the past several months, I had spoken with Diane about where the EMS was going and what the potential was to have more full-time paid hours than volunteer hours. And then we would have to decide what that meant, if anything, the hospital. So that's how she and I started talking about EMS.
Yeah. And it really came down to, I think, money for you guys because you, if you were not considered a critical care access hospital, your Medicare and Medicaid...
We would be reimbursed differently, yes.
Okay.
And it would have a negative impact on us.
Yeah. So that's how it all started. And so our talks have been very open. We've had different people in our, we've met, what, three times? We've had council meeting here, council member here and there, EMT, fire department personnel here on occasion, and just trying to figure out a solution to the problem. I had tried to put together a West End EMS with Delaware Sherwood and Hicksville just to share EMTs in the scheduling process, since, you know, a lot of towns have the same problem with volunteers. And that did not fly. And I've tried to get first responders trained for years because then we wouldn't need, I guess from my understanding, we'd need one EMT and one first responder on a run. That hasn't happened. I don't know what to do. And so that also made it look viable for the Community Memorial Hospital to be involved in the EMS service.
So we talked to our board and there were things we needed to investigate, which was the process that we were doing was to do some investigation. This is not unheard of. There are other hospitals in the state of Ohio that run EMS services. There are other hospitals, critical access hospitals in the country that do. And in fact, DeKalb Hospital in Auburn also runs the county EMS for DeKalb County. So it is not an unheard of concept. But I think as we're working through this and a lot of the issues, I think a lot of people had some questions. And we were nowhere close to making this happen.
Even though I would like to have seen a goal by, you know, January 1st, but we all know government moves slow and all this stuff takes time. But I think one of the thoughts that we had was that if the hospital took over the EMS service, that they would use those EMTs in other areas of the hospital at the same time and also offer a service to the community. If you could explain what that is, of the home visits with the EMTs?
So at a USDA critical, USDA rural health meeting that I attended, other critical access hospitals use paramedics that are part of the EMS team to go into patients' homes post-hospital discharge to make certain, do you have your medicines? Are you, you know, have you have your physician visit arranged? You know, check your vitals? How are you doing? Because, you know, first of all, there's the quality care for the patient to make sure that they're well. But secondly, there is the issue of readmissions to the hospital. You know, many times we can provide good care, but if patients go home and they're noncompliant because they don't check their blood pressure, they don't take their medicines, they don't have access to go get their medications, then they're going to end up sick and back in the hospital. Right now, we're still getting paid for those readmissions. But at some point, because other hospitals do not get paid for readmissions, we have to figure out how to keep patients compliant and healthy in their homes without being readmitted post-discharge. And that's what other rural hospitals are using, using their paramedic EMT service for. And those services are, end up being at no charge. But, so that was one way that we thought that we might do this. You know, at the current time, I don't have permission and we're not moving forward with this kind of project. But I thought it was important to still come and listen and share ideas.
So there were some concerns in the community that I heard about this happening. And people had questions. And so I just thought it'd be nice if we could come here and people could ask their questions and we can, you know, if we know an answer, we'll answer you. So who would like to start? The EMTs are here. Do any of you want to make any comments on what you think of the idea? If you want to make any comments, go to the podium.
Andrew, I've been an EMT of the village off and on for about five years. So I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Kramer and all the other EMTs here for a long time. I did have a few concerns about this type of ordeal. Personally, as I'm now a part-time EMT for the village, I think that it would be very beneficial to me. The benefits, all the other things that go along with working for the hospital, you know, no offense, but you've got a pretty good hospital over there, right? However, on the village side, I do not believe that this is what's best for the village. I have a firm belief that the hospital is there to do one thing, and that's make money. Again, no offense to your business, that's your job, just like I'm a safety guy for a company here in town. Safety is very important to us, but at the end of the day, if the polls don't come out the door, we don't make money and I don't have a job. It's the same thing there. So with that being said, the village is going to be the primary customer, which means the village is going to pick up the tab. And I don't believe that going to this kind of an arrangement is going to be good for the people of the village, constituents, nor would it be good for the village itself.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's my two cents on it. I know that there is a lot of concern, and like she said, she said she doesn't have permission, it might not be going through. I think that there is three things that we can do to improve where we are financially as a department, the Hicksville Rescue Squad. I think the first thing that we need to do is outsource our billing. Projections estimate as much as 25 to 30% increased revenue by outsourcing our billing. And that's just making sure that the billing and coding is done correctly. That's not raising any rates or anything else like that. That's just simply doing it right. Currently, we have EMTs who are doing all the billing, and no offense to that individual, I won't point him out, but that's not what he does. That's not what he's trained for. People go to college for billing and coding. So perhaps that's something that we could look into. The second thing is grants. There is a lot to be said about sending somebody, training, training them to write grants, handle grants. There's a lot of money out there for services like ours. The United States government understands that volunteerism is dying and they are putting things out there, especially for equipment and safety for EMS. And then the last thing there is, I believe we could raise our rates. We're looking at a $500 basic run and a $750, I think, advanced run. Pretty much everybody else, that's unheard of. Most places around here are going to 1,000 for a basic, 1,500 for an advanced, and some of them are even just going 1,500 for everything. I'm not saying that we have to raise them astronomically or be at that level, but I think that's something that we could look into and that would drastically improve our condition.
It's my understanding that our last mutual aid fire contract agreement, that rates were put in those until the year 2020, Cheryl told me so. Raising rates until 2020 doesn't sound viable. But I'm just answering that.
I understand. And there is more work there to be done and contracts to be done, but it's something to consider in the future, for sure.
I appreciate your suggestions.
2020 is not that far away.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. Well?
What about really good, sound ideas?
Yeah. How about some really good, sound ideas? Yes, Bill, would you like to go up to the podium, please? Bill, you're a past fire chief.
It's a bit of a squeeze back there. It's a bit of a squeeze back there.
Yeah. It'd be more of a squeeze for me.
I'll take that as a compliment.
My name is Bill Elwood. I have one main question. We just voted in a tax increase through 2020, '22. What will happen to that money?
Are you talking the one that the village just put on?
For the EMS, for the operation of the EMS.
We're obviously still going to have to pay something. I don't know what that number is yet. That's my biggest concern, is how much is this going to cost the village? At this point, we're maintaining, but we're not gaining. We can get the day-to-day stuff done, money-wise, but our big purchases, squads, fire trucks, stuff like that, we're not gaining enough to put in reserve to get those bought. I can't answer that. If it's not needed, we'll take it off. I'm not just going to keep collecting money that we don't need or can't funnel somewhere, you know what I'm saying? That's all I know about that at this point. The final cost of what this is going to cost the village is yet to be determined. And that's what a lot of this is hinging on, as far as I'm concerned.
Does that answer your question, Bill? I mean...
The other questions go along with that. Scott said that they'll still be paying, which is probably...
Which was one of the things, one of the things I was just going to, maybe this could take us into. We talked about what method of billing there would be if Community Memorial Hospital took over the EMS service. And one of the things that we discussed is you found out you cannot force the village to put on a levy for EMS service to collect, to pay for the service to the hospital, right?
We cannot put a levy on. It would have to go through the village if there were to be a levy.
Right. Okay, that's a better explanation.
Yes.
So what we talked, what she talked about maybe doing is that right now, and Cheryl, John, whoever can explain this differently if you want, we bill the townships for the runs. We bill the insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid, for the runs. And what we collect from them, we bill to the townships. Or we don't bill to the townships, we pay to the townships. What we collect from insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, we give to the townships and in turn, they return 100% of the cost of the run to us. So the townships are paying 100% of the cost of the run, and we're giving them what we've collected by billing. So we thought that the village of Hicksville could be billed in the same way, that we would pay per run like all the townships do right now. Did I explain that okay? You're shaking your head.
Put some numbers to that.
Okay, yeah.
I don't think the people here understand what the price of an EMS run is, what the return that we get for Medicare and Medicaid, and then you in turn have to pay the rest.
Okay. Good idea. We'll tell them our rates.
Yeah. I think you need to explain the whole step.
Okay. All right, Bill?
Yeah. Well, one other concern. You were talking about increasing rates. I'm sure if you go into the hospital, you're going to have to have a contract or some, I don't like contracts, but, and that may be plausible for a period of time, but what's going to happen in the future?
Yeah. I understand that, yeah. Yep. I mean, the village could do that, too. We're going to have to raise rates if we keep it. I'm speaking for myself, but, I mean, I kind of feel it's going to go that way. So, anything else?
Nope. That's all I got.
John, could I ask you to tell us the billing rates and how much we collect from Medicare and Medicaid per run? Because this is John Elwood, and he's currently doing our billing for us, and I think he does a great job.
Someone thinks that, at least. Our basic run is $500, and then you get billed $10 a mile, loaded mile, from either wherever we pick you up, residence or scene, to the hospital. In an advanced run is $700 and $10 a mile, loaded mile, to the hospital.
Which was advanced, seven?
700. And if it's a no transport, where we're called and we do not transport you, it's $110. We bill the insurance. Downfall is sign-offs. We don't get insurance information usually, so that goes direct to the patient instead of the insurance company. If we have a Medicare run, we pick someone up that has Medicare. Medicare pays roughly 54%. So on a $500 run, they pay 280. $700 run, it's right around 300. So it's not much difference. Most people that are on Medicare have Medicaid or a secondary insurance. And they usually pick up what's left out of what Medicare does not pay. For somebody on Medicaid, whether it's a $500 basic run or a $700 advanced run, they only pay 87.34. And we cannot go after the patient for anything other than what they pay.
What percentage of our runs are each category?
Ain't got those numbers, but looking at it, it's in the high 80s to 90s is Medicare/Medicaid runs.
How many, what about Medicaid versus Medicare?
The majority of them are Medicare.
Probably 10 to 15% of those, just off the top of my head.
Because I think you have to put that into the formula to know what you've got. A concern I have is...
Would you go to the podium, please, Ed?
Okay, sure. I'm Ed Fox, and I know we've struggled for years to get volunteers. This has been going on for 35 or 40 years. My fear is, once you start going to all full-time, and I think it's already happening, is you're going to get less and less volunteers. They're technically part-time people because they are paid. And I think by the more full-time we have to go to, the more we're going to struggle to get part-time people to make runs. And I think you've got to look at it, what's it cost for full-time people to run versus, you know, for the village versus having the hospital pick it up? And even there, they may be able to, we just don't have any jobs that we could have assign those people when they aren't making runs, full-time people. Whereas to a point, perhaps in a hospital, they could be doing some other things. Maybe so, maybe not. I don't know. But I think it boils down to dollars and cents, but we're getting to a point, for the village at least, we've never missed a run that I'm aware of. And God forbid, we never, we never have that problem, but we're getting to a point where we're going to roll the dice one too many times, perhaps, to make sure that we do cover the runs. I don't know what going to the hospital that would guarantee that. At least they have other trained personnel that could fill in, perhaps, where we certainly I guess it's food for thought. I don't have a strong feeling either way, but I am concerned for the village that we can continue to not miss any runs.
Well, none of us want to see a run missed, that's for sure.
I know. Nobody does. Absolutely not. And I'm not, I'm not insinuating even anybody wants to, but I just don't want to see that happen either. And by perhaps better planning or going through the hospital, there's perhaps less chance of that happening. Even there, if something could happen, I understand. But we've been, we've been running very short on people for a lot of years. It's nothing new. And when you take into account your costs, it used to be, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not up on it, I've never used that service, thank goodness. I hope I never have to. But one of the costs you have to look at is, it was at one time that the firemen were being used as drivers, to the EMT. When we figure our costs, we've got to look at those costs of those drivers as well as the EMTs in regard to what it would cost us to continue to do the service.
We do, we do still do that. That puts two EMTs in the back of the squad and it's better patient care.
Yeah. But, but again, that's, that's a cost that has to be included in if the village keeps that service.
Anything else, Ed?
No. And I guess if it boils down to it, the village, at least, if they have to put a tax on to do it, or we have to do that, then I think we should at least consider it.
Well, you were certainly one of council's big number crunchers in the past when it came to fire contracts and everything, so I know you're familiar with the expenses involved.
But that's all I really have, but I really think it ought to be explored, and I do have concerns that perhaps it's better for the hospital to take it over only from the extent of making sure we don't miss a run. Because they've got the people that could back up to technically do that stuff. And we don't.
Thank you, Ed. Would you like to say anything about perhaps your thoughts of doing a transfer service if the hospital would have the EMS?
So one of the four EMTs, when this conversation first began, throughout the idea of a transfer service and even a potential schedule and how that would work. So we would have to have two, there'd be a team on and available to the village, there would be a team off for the day, and there would be a team that'd be available for transfers. Currently, if you're a patient in RER, sometimes we need to ship you out to another organization. You're waiting three, four, five hours in a hospital bed for an EMS out of defiance or wherever else that just transports outside of the community to take you to Fort Wayne, Toledo, Defiance, not usually Defiance, Fort Wayne or Toledo. If we, one way to decrease the expense of the service is to provide transports out to those other facilities. That improves the patient's ability to get to a tertiary center. It helps to defray the cost of providing such a service. So that, that was one area that we did look at, because not every candidate is eligible for flying. The helicopters cannot always go, and not every condition qualifies for flight as well.
And I just simply asked her to tell you that because that is something that we discussed when we were talking, that perhaps a transfer service would get patients out of town faster than waiting.
Ed did talk about hospital, you know, what we could have them do. You know, we've explored that, though one idea was going to patients' homes. Some patients don't want home health because they don't want patients, they don't want people from the outside in their homes. But they will allow paramedics or EMTs into their homes because they've already been there. And that's what I learned from the USDA, and so that was one idea. Because EMS could be called out at any time, they couldn't have a regular assignment based on, depending on the level of EMT, what their scope is, they could do things, if the ER is busy, if respiratory is busy, assist with EKGs in the hospital. They could help with patient transportation, they could do vitals. There's anything within the scope of an EMT or a paramedic, as far as the squad concerned, it carries over to their scope of practice within the hospital. So there is work that they could do when they're not running.
I'm open to suggestions for anybody that wants to come up to the podium and give us some ideas.
My name's Bob Meyer. Been with the village for many years. Also been with the hospital for quite a few years as well. Some questions that I had, and food for thought, more or less. You talk about increasing your staff at the hospital with having either EMTs or paramedics. My thought there is, you're definitely going to have to increase quite a few of your employees as paramedics in order to do your transfers and also to do a lot of things in the ER that's there. I know the paramedic situation is about as critical as the EMT situation. And I think you're going to have a lot of increased cost by getting more paramedics For years, we've struggled with getting EMTs and everything, and basically, it's always come down to cost. A lot of what's starting here, I think, goes right back to the cost, the cost for the village or the cost for the hospital. I know by taking on full-time EMS, it increases your budget. That means that you're paying an EMT somewhere around $32,000 a year just to start off as a basic EMT. I know that's what the crunch for the village is. It's, it's probably only going to get a little bit worse. The other part that I look at as an EMT, on the financial side for just myself, it's being able to do something full-time and get paid for it. Like they said before, the volunteer is very hard to get and is dying off. And it's because of the people need... because of the people need the income to raise their families and to take care of life in general. And that's what's increasing everyone to be not volunteering and going to either part-time jobs or full-time jobs. So I, I know that's, that's one of the big concerns here. But I do see going to the hospital, there are things that I would love to go work in the emergency room and improve skills and things that you do, too. But by this going to the hospital, all I see is a shift of burden from here, point A, shifting to point B. I, and one of the council members years ago said, "We are a service to the community. We will never make the village of Hicksville any money." And that has stuck true for years and years and years. We're lucky if we break even, I understand that. But I do go back and see that it is a service to the community. But on the other end, as a village employee, you know, it's just like I'm stuck in between the two. What do you do? Where do you go? I still wanna continue to make a good wage. Will I make a, continue to make a good wage? And on the other hand, when I make my good wage, what do I pay? I pay all them taxes and all them charges that are gonna come from either end. It's like, okay, you want to raise rates or put a higher mill on, you know, that's gotta come out of your pocket somewhere, too. So I know, there's tough decisions here. I think some of it, too, is, is the open forum maybe tonight and being on TV, that people are gonna understand this, and they definitely, I think, are gonna have more questions. I mean, I have a lot of questions, too, that, you know, I'm slowly trying to work through my mind and, and answer both ways. I don't wanna see something go to the hospital, and I've already heard that the hospital, if they take this over in the first year or two, are gonna be several thousand dollars in the hole. I don't wanna see that either. I realize the village runs a little bit in the hole, just from the division of EMS side. I understand that, too. Which one's gonna be better? Is a bigger hole gonna be going to the hospital, or is a bigger hole staying where we're at? Things to consider, people have to understand. I think that in the long run, going full-time EMS is just securing that we are here to deliver a service to the community of Hicksville. That's a guaranteed service that is there. As far as having runs and not EMTs answering the call, it's rare. But it has happened a little more often in the last couple of years than it ever has in the past. So that is something. Now, and even when we, if we would go to the hospital, we still will be providing a service to the community of Hicksville, or any of our neighboring towns that are requesting backup service for EMS as well. None of that will change. But like he said, if we would end up going to the hospital every time there's a run in the village of Hicksville, those charges are gonna be charged, and the village is gonna have to pay that full price for that run. Something else I hope the people will take a look at is this reimbursement up here, because it, it's not our fault or the hospital's fault. This is the way the state runs. We're giving you so much money for a Medicare run and a Medicaid run. And I don't think a lot of people in the community understand how that paperwork there is being done. That's why the, most of the time, we're in the hole. The difference isn't any different with the hospital. If the hospital takes us over, they're still gonna fight those same numbers. Their Medicaid's only gonna give them a certain amount, and Medicare's only gonna give them a certain amount, and for some reason, that never makes 100%. There's always in the hole. So I think that's things that people need to understand as well. So those are, I think those are questions out there that need to be brought up and, and people understand. And I think, think this over very carefully, because, you know, which way do you wanna go, which is the best way? As far as I'm concerned, I can't say either one of you are ever gonna be out of the hole. I think that you're always gonna be running, you're, you're not gonna get 100% reimbursement, and you're not gonna make any money off of the service that we provide. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any comments?
I can make a comment. Mike Barth, City Council. I've been part of council and very supportive of the fire, policing, EMS, and I wanna thank the current staff and the past staff that we've ran on this department. I think it is a service to our community, and you guys put a lot of time in, or some of you put a lot more time in, others, it's just that you're calling, and I appreciate that, and thank you for doing all that. I've seen different EMT personnel come and go, and once they get involved in it and see how many hours they do have to put in, once they get full-time and/or a position, a paid position, they realize it's a lot more time than they thought, kinda thing, or what's hoping for. But they always step up, and I always took a look, like the townships around us, they come to Hicksville for the service. I mean, they can go contract with other communities for that EMT service, but we have good departments, good staff, good equipment, and good personnel. So first of all, I wanna thank all you for making those commitments and sacrifices, kinda thing. I'm still torn, listening to the numbers and how it's gonna get reimbursed, and how the city could afford it down the road. It's never anything you can't afford, but as a tax, you know, group that we're, we all pay into, can it be viable down the road to support the EMTs full-time? Because I've said for years, being in part of this, it's gonna go to full-time, you gotta pay the people for their positions. You need six people full-time, you need eight people, you know, you gotta look at your police department. That's a service. I can't remember how many, what are you gonna have, eight?
Eight, full-time.
Police officers, you know? And it seems like things are going well, but it does cost the community money to have that service. Insurance has increased, salaries increase, cost of living increases, that all goes up over the course of time. And our 1% income tax stays the same, and it only grows if you have people moving into your community, living here, working here, and paying into that. And sometimes that doesn't always reflect the increase that you need for your services, of course. So, I don't know if I said anything important, but I appreciate what you've done. I've listened to the hospital numbers and, and how that could be worked out, along with the city, but I, me personally, I've always thought that we gotta pay our personnel good salaries, it's, you know, jobs, careers, and as, as our community grows, and hopefully we're seeing growth in our community, you know, those services increase, and those costs increase. But I thank you for all that you do.
I would also like to reiterate how dedicated our EMTs are in this community, and when we're short-staffed, the hours and hours that they put in, being on call to respond to those runs, if there's not enough people scheduled to do that. And we have some great dedicated EMTs that cover that, so thank you. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make?
I have one that I missed, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, I know one, when I was involved with this, one of the things we always tried to look at was, at what level does, does Medicare pay? In other words, they sometimes increase their amount, not a percentage. They're gonna pay that 54% probably, but they'll pay, if you bill $700, they'll pay 54% of 700 instead of 54% of 500. There's a point that where it maxes out, where they only pay to a certain amount. I don't know whether we've maxed our rate out to, to get our maximum amount for Medicare, but that's one of the things we always looked at, to try to get our maximum amount of money that we could for the runs. And I, hopefully, somebody's already looked at that, and I don't know that. But if, if we haven't, that's, that's another source of income that should help us, regardless of which way we go. And, and I do, I appreciate the EMTs, you know, they, they, they got a thankless job, put in a lot of hours, and I'm, I'm afraid throughout the years, we've had some great EMTs that just got burned out, because we ask, you know, volunteer five days a week, you know, as, as a being on call, and you just give them any time to yourself. And that's perhaps partly our fault, but we just couldn't get enough EMTs to cover the other times. But again, again, thank you to the EMTs, because they've done a great job, and I know that.
Well, it appears that no one else has any other comments, so I thank everyone for coming, and this is where we're at and all we know, and, you know, we're open to suggestions on how to keep everything functioning the best we can, and how that can happen. Did you wanna say anything, Scott, as the fire chief over the EMS department?
Well, I think the, the cost is the biggest thing. We have competition out there that we can't compete with, some other entities that have full-time EMTs and paramedics that have a bigger pocketbook than we do. We do what we can. Appreciate everything our EMTs do. They do a thankless job that sometimes gets forgotten about. But we do have a great crew, both fire and EMS, I'd put up against anybody and not worry about the job getting done. Bottom line is, it comes down to the money, so we'll just have to do some figuring and see what's gonna be best.
Good. Thank you.
Do you know whether that money that they pay is still based on what's reasonable and customary?
Yes, it is.
Because I know when we first started, you know, we operated for a long time and didn't charge anything.
Right.
And then they just charged a little bit, where everybody else was charging more.
Right.
And we wouldn't increase our price, which was detrimental, because if we'd increased our price, it would've raised up the reasonable and customary price, and we'd have got more.
Yeah, and they were using an average of what other people were billing in our area.
Something, you know, you guys are gonna have to...
Well, Cheryl's shaking her head that we're maxed out, so... Good question.
I don't know, but I remember 40 years ago, me and another guy in this room discussed something like this, too, but...
Yeah. Yep. Okay.
Throwing out some, some more numbers that I crunched.
Okay.
And going back to you guys saying how we have, our EMTs are running, putting in a lot of hours, we've got five that are running seven days a week, covering three shifts a day, seven days a week. With that being said, last year, we finished with, as of December 31st, we finished with 354 squad runs. As of today, we are at 390. So we've already gone up, we're running more than one a day, on an average. And just for tidbit of information, we've had 12 runs in the last five days. So it's still busy. Just throwing numbers out.
Okay. No one has anything else? We'll call it a night. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, folks.